Good evening. This is the Town of Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Tuesday, January 7th. It is now 7:00 PM. And the first and only item on our agenda tonight is an application of South Shore Habitat for Humanity, Inc. for a comprehensive permit under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 as amended, to construct two affordable, single-family dwellings on approximately .95 acres of land located in Residence District C at 302-304 Whiting Street. And before we begin, I want to note that these proceedings are being recorded by the zoning administrator and the local cable access television, Harbor Media, and for that reason, all comments, including those from members of the public, must be made into a microphone. Additionally, I have designated Associate Member Michael Mercurio to my right here to participate as a member of the panel on the application. I assume you're representing the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, so I think what we should do tonight is have the applicant make a presentation with respect to the project. I then want to open it up to comment from local public officials, if there are any in the room tonight, and get some initial public comment. These proceedings are going to be continued. This will not be the only hearing on this matter, so you'll all have an opportunity to comment on this project at other hearings in addition to at this hearing tonight. So don't feel as though if you haven't been able to say something that you want to say, that this is your only opportunity. You will be able to make additional comments at the continued hearings that we'll have. So with that, I'd ask the applicant to present the project, please.
Sure. First of all, thank you to the board for having us here. My name is Martine Taylor, and I'm the Executive Director for South Shore Habitat. I'm here tonight with Noreen Brown, who is our Director of Program Services and oversees our Construction Division. And the main thing tonight is to tell you who we are, what we do, and make sure the public understands that, tell you about our proposal, certainly address any questions that may or may not come up, and if there are questions we're not prepared to answer tonight, then in the additional hearings, we will do so. South Shore Habitat has been in existence for 33 years, and our mission as an organization is to provide local members of the community with an opportunity to have homeownership and to purchase homes and own their own homes. We're not a rental assistance program for folks that make 60% of the area median income. So it's a demigration of the, you know, a demographic of the population that otherwise often has difficulty moving into communities in which we serve. We serve 35 cities and towns on the South Shore, Hingham being one of them. We've already built three homes here in the town, and our proposal, as you mentioned, is for two more, so which would bring our total now upwards to 66 homes that we would have completed. Our proposal, and certainly you'll see our site plans, is to develop two, single-family homes, three bedrooms, one-and-a-half-bath homes, Cape design style, and that is our typical model, is a three-bedroom home. And the idea is we're not building huge, but rather simple, decent, affordable homes for members of the community. In terms of this proposal, you have what we're looking to present. We have presented in the past to the Board of Selectmen. We have had a public hearing already on this project. We also held in a butter meeting for the public to, so that they're aware, to which we addressed many concerns that were listed. And I think there are a couple of main myths that I want to just dispel about Habitat. People do think that our purpose is to give our houses away, that our homes are free. Our homes are purchased with an affordable mortgage program, so these folks are members of the community who want to live and work here and, just like the rest of us, pay their taxes and purchase their own homes. And so we do not want to be the exception to the rule when we come into a community. We want to listen to what the community has to offer. We want to hear concerns of neighbors, of the town, but also make sure that we're looking at this population that needs service. And I also would be remiss if I didn't say the congratulations to the town. I serve 35 towns. Not many can actually say that they've reached their 10%, so I applaud the town for doing that. But I would not be in the business that I'm in if I didn't remind you that meeting 10% is an old state guideline that gave a benchmark for, in fact, a low benchmark for towns to be able to address a housing stock and a housing crisis. I do serve on the Affordable Housing Task Force through the South Shore Chamber and the 2030 Plan, and I would encourage the public and anybody, I do these in all my presentations, to read that plan. If you Google "2030, South Shore," it will come right up, and it will talk to you about the need for affordable housing. Meeting the 10% is not addressing the crisis. So our hope with this is that we can bring two more affordable units to your community for folks. And I know that you have met your 10%, but a lot of those are rental properties, and folks are looking to move in and to purchase their homes. So certainly, we want to address any concerns. We appreciate the support of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I think our goal collectively here tonight is to just try to get to some sort of resolve and hopefully be able to move ahead with our application.
Great, thank you. Do we have the applicants, who's representing the applicant in terms of engineers?
We do have our engineer here tonight. We figured we didn't know if you wanted to do it at a time now or address concerns as they come up, either way?
Just a brief presentation, just in terms of what the project involves, just to give folks some context would be helpful.
Sure. So Gary James is our engineer, so, thank you.
My name is Gary James. I am the engineer on this project. And as you stated, it is a one-acre parcel, about 41,000 square feet, and we are proposing two houses, and the address is 302-304. It is abutted to the north by the driveway associated with Derby Brook condominiums, and to the south by another residential unit.
Okay.
The parcel will be subdivided, or in conjunction with this, so each one of them will have their own lot. One will be about $25,000, and the other one will be about $15,000.
Okay.
As noted, the houses are fairly small.
Yeah, did I read 1,200 to 1,300 square feet?
Yes. Overall, the, of the 41,000, I believe the total impervious associated with this is only probably about somewhere between 13% and 14% of the lot, so we're not seeing a great deal of impervious associated with this. There is an existing house on the lot at the rear, existing two-bedroom dwelling that will be removed in conjunction with this, with this proposal, and essentially, one house will be located here, and one house will be located in front of the existing house. They will have a common drive. The drive will be 23 feet wide with 12-inch berms on both sides, so it will be 21-foot-wide travelway.
And the driveway comes directly off of Whiting Street there?
It comes directly off of Whiting Street. Now, the driveway itself is located exactly where the existing driveway is now, so it won't, there won't be any changes whatsoever in terms of the overall traffic pattern associated with what's going on on Whiting Street. We will be bringing water in, so it will be, we will be using public water. They will each have their own individual septic system. They will be in compliance with Title V. The site will be in compliance with stormwater standards. Now, the site itself is, all the proposed activity will be outside the limits of the buffer associated with the, with the bordering vegetated wetlands at the rear of the lot. There is a stream currently runs along the backside of the lot, so there is a riverfront associated with it, so we do have, we will be filing a conservation in conjunction with this. There won't be any activity except for the demolition of the homes associated within the limits of the buffer, of the, to the wetlands, but it will be some activity within the, between the inner and the outer repairant.
Okay.
Now, the house itself, the existing house is actually located inside the inner repairant, so that will be removed, so we will be further away from the, from the top of the stream bank associated with the, associated with the stream, although it is, it is unnamed, doesn't have a name, so.
Okay.
Other than that, as I stated, it will meet stormwater. The homes runoff coming off of the roof will be collected and directed to dry wells. We will be taking approximately two feet off the top of the site.
Okay.
To try and reduce the overall grade from Whiting Street up to the, up to the houses.
Yeah.
I believe if you look at the, at the proposed driveway, we max out at about a 4, 4.2% grade will be the maximum grade coming up to it. As you can see, about, about two feet is what we're going to be taking off the top of the lot. So it'll probably come down from, from an existing high rate now around 51 down to about 48 to 49, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Pat, I think I can, I can turn it back over to the chair.
Okay. And do we have, we do not yet have a list of waivers that you're going to be requesting?
Have a list of waivers?
Or we do have that?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Except from the local conservation regulations.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll address those. I would note for the public that we're going to have this project reviewed by the town's peer review engineer, Pat Brennan, and he has not yet had an opportunity to comment on the project, so he'll provide feedback, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to any feedback that Mr. Brennan provides, but we just don't have that yet. Any questions from the board at this point?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. And I'm gonna, I don't have any questions either at this point. It seems fairly straightforward. Things may arise once, you know, once Pat Brennan reviews the project, there may be Are there any public officials in the audience that want to comment on the project?
Good evening. My name is Tim White. I'm the Chair of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, and I'd like to recognize another member here, Nancy Kerber, in the audience, and a happy new year to everybody.
Good evening.
The Hingham Affordable Housing Trust was created by a vote of 2007 Town Meeting, and we were created specifically to try and maintain and create new affordable housing in the town. Statute that authorized that was passed in 2006, making Hingham one of the first towns in the state of Massachusetts to step up to the plate and say, "We recognize we have a shortfall of affordable housing, and congrats to our town for doing that." The trust, the purpose of the trust is summarized in the bylaw the Town Meeting passed it, and specifically saying that to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in the town of Hingham for low and moderate-income households. Now, the trustees are all Hingham residents, who, just like you, are volunteering their time and their expertise to make our town a better place to live in. The trust unanimously supports the creation of two affordable units at 302-304 Whiting Street. And the Board of Selectmen unanimously supported Habitat's LIP application with the state for up to two affordable housing units for the site, and a copy of that approval from the state for that LIP application is included in Habitat's submission to you. I would note that the trust initially, Mr. Healy can recall this as being a member of the Board of Selectmen, were seeking to build three units on that lot. It was a one acre, it's approximately one-acre lot, and, but after getting the input from the Board of Selectmen, we cooperatively agreed to scale back our request to the two that is presently before the board tonight. Now, there is not enough affordable housing in Massachusetts, and statistically, the housing costs here are amongst the highest in the nation. A challenge to create affordable housing in the town of Hingham is astronomical. I've been on the trust now for about 10 years, and it is a challenging, challenging effort. The average cost of a single-family home in Hingham is over $813,000. Now, prices in Massachusetts have jumped about 23% since 2013, even higher here in Hingham. Now, to put the challenge into context for everybody, the trust can sell a deed restricted three-bedroom affordable housing unit for no more than $249,500, 249,500. So this means that if the trust bought the average home, one that meets all Hingham's zoning and regulatory requirements, it would cost the town about $550,000 to create one single affordable unit. It goes without saying that that prices out many of our own kids and many of our seniors. Now, yes, Hingham has now met its 10%, and we will likely maintain that safe harbor even with the 2020 census coming up, although that's certainly not guaranteed. Both the trust and the Board of Selectmen have publicly stated that this is a positive for the town, but it doesn't mean that we have enough affordable housing in the town of Hingham. We have a housing needs study that's being performed right now collaboratively with the entire town. We have representatives from our trust, from Planning, CPC, Board of Selectmen, Housing Authority, and other representatives of the town. The preliminary report concludes that there is a significant need for the exact type of housing that Habitat proposes for 302-304 Whiting. Now, we recognize that you, as a board, have your own responsibility to our town to make sure that proposed housing is safe, sanitary, and a positive addition to our community. We at the trust urge you to work with Habitat to make this small development of two houses on an acre of land at 302-304 Whiting Street, a property that, by the way, for many, many years, had two houses on that lot, a reality. The challenges are great, not just for our trust, but for our town. We can't afford to purchase a market-rate home for affordable purposes. We just can't do it, $550,000. Opportunities to build on vacant land are so limited and so expensive that we at the trust need to, we need to get creative. We need to look around and figure out different ways that we can do our job, like looking at tax titles in town, and we do that, or looking to partner with folks like Habitat. Now, this property came to the trust from the Board of Selectmen with a goal and the directive to build affordable housing on it. Now, the Selectmen, they received this property, 302-304 Whiting, as part of a 40B comprehensive permit that has become Derby Brook. Now, folks, these opportunities are few and far between, like we have tonight. We urge you to leverage this opportunity for the betterment of the town at large. We enjoy working for the town as a trust. We get great support from the Board of Selectmen, from CPC, from Town Meeting, and we're asking to work together with you to create these two units. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. All right, I'd now like to invite public comment. I just want to remind the public that when you come forward to address the board, that you state your name and address and speak into the microphone, which is over there tonight, and address your comments to the board. So with that, I'll open it up. Yes, sir.
Can we bring it over there?
Yes. Are you able to make it over to the microphone, or?
I live at 20 Derby Brook Way in Hingham, and a number of people are in my community tonight, so first I'll just ask if you would show hands for those of you who live in Derby Brook, just so you know that there's a number of us that felt this important enough to come out.
Thank you.
We have some significant concerns with the plan, and we don't think we're crazy. So what we thought was the best thing to do would be to come and share with you the logic for our concerns and see if we can come to an accommodation, and at the end of this, we have a proposed solution. Before I do that, a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm going to give you two pictures. This is the...
Can you just make sure that you're speaking into the microphone? I just want to make sure this is picked up by...
So this is the initial proposed septic plan for Derby Brook.
Yes.
Can you see this okay?
Sorry, we just wanted to make sure that the camera is, I mean, the microphone will pick up what you're saying, and I'm told that it will.
So this is the original, can you hold that picture? This is the original proposed septic plan for Derby Brook, April of 2011. So it's before construction ever began on this, and this is kind of a big picture. So just to orient you correctly, this is Peniman Hills down here, and this is the Range over here on this side. Outside the street over here is Linden Potts. So we're between Peniman Hills and the Range. So this, as you can see, is the entryway in here, the road coming up, and you can see those are the 20 proposed houses that we have in green that you see there. And you can see in the middle of that, that we have five individual septic systems, and those are the five beach and fields that you see with those septic systems. So we have one septic system serving four houses. This is Derby Brook, which is the year-round fast stream. These are the wetlands connected with it, and these, as you can see, are the repairant lines to the west of Derby Brook, that's the 100 and I see 200. So you can see with the original plan, all of the septic systems and all the beach and fields outside the repairant. Do I need to hold this?
Yeah, would that be...
Sure. It's been a long time, but that's... All right. So our boundary line starts in this black right here, goes over there, comes all the way down there. So this was all part of the original plan in, in 2009, when all this property was acquired by the developer. Okay, so this piece of it is a piece that we're going to talk about now, but as you can see from the stream and the wetlands, anytime you have a repairant line to the west, you also have one on the other side of the river to the east. So you see, this is the 100 line, and of course, it's not only in this direction, but it's also in this direction, and you see the 200 line that you see there. Okay? So this is the property known as 302-304. Same stream, same river that you see here, except in the other diagram, it keeps on coming around over in this direction, and these are the same wetlands that you see here, and this is the same 100 repairant line that you see there, and this is the 200 repairant line that you see there. Okay? These, these are the rain gardens that we have at the bottom of the hill here, and as you can see, while the two houses are here, the septic tanks themselves and the septic systems and the standby systems are all between the 100 and 200 repairant line. And then this is Nickerson's Well, right over here, which is 125 linear feet from there to the first septic line. Now, the only other remarkable thing on this diagram is that you see these little hash marks right in here. There isn't a diagram that was provided by Habitat that has the hash marks on this particular diagram, so I've lifted them off of the other one and put them in the right place. Those are contour lines. Okay, so what that says is that between this location and the top of this hill, there's a 16-foot drop-off in 60 feet. This is all slope. Okay? This is not just slope, that's a cliff. Same number of drop-off, there's 18 feet drop-off between here and the wetlands here. It's just cliff. Okay? So the big picture here is, while this entire black area that you see in there is indeed 41,000 square feet, the usable part of that property is a lot less than 41,000 square feet, because you can't do anything down here, and you're not going to excavate all of that in there and flatten it out. So the amount of real land that you have in there is considerably less. Okay, so let's, I want to leave that up, so you can look at that.
Does the zoning administrator have a copy of what?
I was going to give one. Oh, okay.
This is an update.
Great, thank you.
I'm rehearsing this, it's going pretty fast, so I just ask if you will bear with me and let me go through this.
Okay, I mean, I, I do want to make sure that we have time to get to other public comment as well, so if you can just walk us through it, and we do have a copy for the record as well.
It's taking 11 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, starting at the top first.
Just make sure you have the microphone, please.
The 40B application for 302-304 Whiting Street is very well done. It's very professional, it addresses all the major concerns, it's transparent, and it's technical. It also identifies the imminent risk to Derby Brook's wetlands, stream, wildlife habitat, and adjacent potable well.
I don't want to interrupt you, but are you able to summarize the document for us, rather than just reading the whole thing into the record? Because we do have it for the record, but if you want to just hit the high points and let us know what, you know, what are the areas of concern? I think that would be most helpful.
All right, so I'll cut it to six minutes, how about that? All right, so there are nine Hingham Board of Health supplemental rules and regulations that have been asked for as part of this application, and four Hingham zoning bylaw waivers asked for as part of this application. Each of those is critically important. On the rest of this page, I've highlighted just three, so in the interest of brevity, let me just take the first one. So the Board of Health waiver number five, which is Section 6.8, the standard wastewater flow allowed by the health code is 110 gallons per day per 12,500 square feet of lot area. This is the health code requirement that Habitat is seeking relief from. On the last two pages of the site plan, where the septic system specifications are detailed, it's estimated that each bedroom will produce 110 gallons per day. Each dwelling is proposed to have three bedrooms, so you've got a six-bedroom total. The total lot area, 41,287, or as you can see from the diagram, considerably less than that. Lot area, which is, which is an unusual topography right next to wetlands, can accommodate only 3.3 bedrooms in accordance with Section 6.8 of the health code. Two structures with three bedrooms each would require 75,000 square foot of area. Two houses on this small lot is simply too many. The second one I'll summarize, more than half of those waivers that are asked for are Title V waivers. Title V waivers means that, in other words, two homes are going to produce a lot more poop than the code allows. There is simply not enough room for all the system components in the area. Waiver number two seeks relief from setback regulations with regard to wetlands. Waiver number three seeks relief from regulations with regard to a potable well. These are all significant asks for an area that's very small. Third example that I gave there, I'll summarize as well. Basically, it asks for a waiver from having to do a soil removal demolition plan. Okay, so older structures are sometimes built with materials which we know to be hazardous. Demolishing such structures or removing soil so close to wetlands needs to be done carefully. Waiving the requirement to seek a permit for soil removal seriously jeopardizes the environmental health of the wetlands. It's not unreasonable to require a soil removal permit, especially for... It's not unreasonable to require a soil removal permit, especially for the wetlands. Okay, the next paragraph is short and is important. The fundamental issue is, now that the town of Hingham has exceeded its 10% uncontested subsidized housing threshold, why should the town override its own public health rules and regulations, and its state's environmental laws, and its own zoning bylaws, and approve 13 waivers for a 40B project for two houses at the expense of the community's health and the environment? How is that in the public interest? I offer some facts, which I'll summarize. The first fact says that it identifies the Environmental Protection Statute for the Commonwealth, and it identifies that the town of Hingham incorporated that statute into its own laws. In terms of the backstory, in January 2009, Derby Brook plans were approved for a 20-unit 40B condominium complex. 15 of those units are market, and five of those units are 40B affordable units. The first drawing I showed you was the as-built for that. 302-304 Whiting Street did not exist until June of 2009. June of 2009, a .95-acre parcel was formed when the developer purchased two parcels from Eastern Quarries and combined them with land purchase from Robert J. Barra. Those new lot lines were drawn, compliance conditions were set by the ZBA. One of those compliance condition was condition number 44, which said that, subject to the project's approval, they were going to tear down those two dilapidated houses on the newly created parcel and put in a restrictive covenant on those to be used as a public safety facility for the town. That was in 2009. Next paragraph, four and a half years later, in 2014, Hingham abandoned the public safety facility issue. And the reason they did, quote, "The redevelopment of the site in any substantial way would be a challenge because of the wetland and riverfront setbacks that affect the parcel." So the town abandoned that. All those references are in the warrant, April 27, 2014. And they cited that. The selectman noted that the existing house would need improvements, saying that, quote, "The Hingham Affordable Housing Trust has funds available for such purposes." Let's look at the Habitat proposal. Proposal is a 40B application that costs for the construction of two new houses in an already disturbed area of the riverfront, where the location of both septic systems, including both septic tanks, both leaching fields, both reserved fields, are all inside the 200-foot riparian zone. Two proposed structures are too dense for the area, particularly with regard to the septic systems. Central points. The first one is section five of 310 CMR 10.58, specifies exactly what work can be done in a disturbed area. The only reason that you're able to do anything at all in this top of the hill is because it's a disturbed area. Okay, that provision of the law says what you can do in a disturbed area. A statute covers rehabilitation of an existing building, or its replacement, or its expansion, but there's no provision for further disturbance of the riverfront area for new construction. In fact, the selectman, in April of 28, 2014, said exactly that in turning over the existing house to the Affordable Housing Trust. Quote, "The Affordable Housing Trust has money for exactly that purpose, meaning rehabilitation of the existing structure, as the developer suggested." April of 27, 2019, the Hingham Town warrant on page 16 stated, as you've already talked about...
Mr. Fisher, I don't want to interrupt you, but we do have this in front of us, and you're reading it into the record. We, I assure you, we will read this letter thoroughly and be familiar with it. Are there any high points that you just want to highlight for us, or any specific areas of the project that you want to direct us to right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The last paragraph, three, on that page.
Thanks.
Waivers based on 40B regulations should have no standing for two reasons. First, since Hingham has met its uncontested 10% subsidized housing threshold, the ZBA does not have to approve any further 40B applications. Second, the town of Hingham has a formal, well-thought-out set of local needs. Local needs is quote/unquote. Those are health rules and regulations set by zoning, and a set of zoning bylaws establish what is, quote, "consistent with local needs." These regulations and bylaws put in place for everyone for good reason. The application seeks nine waivers to the Health Supplemental Board Rules and Regulations, and four town zoning laws. Once the town of Hingham reached its 10% uncontested threshold for subsidized housing, granting waivers to zoning codes and health regulations is not consistent with local needs. There is legal precedent and case law stipulating that 40B application variances and waivers are not consistent with local needs once the town has achieved its uncontested affordable housing threshold at 10%. Our 20 owners of the condominium complex that abuts does not support two structures, but we will support a single structure. We believe that one structure could be configured that would require either no waivers or at least many fewer waivers. A reduction to one structure may allow a configuration in which setback and spacing requirements from the health code can be properly followed, which is essential to the abiding wetlands. So we asked down here, the last three points, we asked that that no septic systems be located inside the 200-foot riparian zone. Second is that the house that's there be rehabilitated, replaced, or expanded. And the third is that you not grant any waivers for variances for the 40B application for 302-304 Whiting Street. We do emphasize that we really do like the idea that Habitat's humanity is putting a house up there. The point is, we don't think there's room for two. And there's a lot of reasons why we think that. And I'll submit the rest to the record, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, any other member of the public who would like to comment? Oh, sure, I'm just going to have him give you the microphone, just so you can...
From it.
Yep, there you go. Just your name and address again.
Sure, it's Janet Bardong, 14 Derby Brookway. It's quite evident, we've done a lot of work and a lot of research if we've done that. We've also had the opportunity through this exercise of following since the onset of meeting with Habitat, who was very cordial to us. And we did have 13 of our owners there to exchange ideas and understand, and that was extremely helpful. And as part of that, a lot of our owners have offered to help. We think it's a wonderful idea, just to echo it. We've also been in a lot of TMS meetings, and we thoroughly understand the need through our research and also taking part in the Affordable Symposium, Affordable Housing Symposium that was in the spring, that Emily invited me to. And also just recently went down to Linden Ponds. I had missed the one that, on the planning, 10-year plan, that was here. So we went Linden Ponds, we've been working with on sidewalks, by the way, for Route 52, just an ad, and gone down there and participated. Totally get it, totally back it. Understand that to be a sustainable community, we need to look to the future, we need to be planning. However, we need to take into consideration that planning. My mailbox has been filling up with permit requests. The Bristol Brothers, who are wonderful neighbors well for the range, are going to expand. They've been very cordial, invited us over, walked us around. Also shared with us that of the 800 acres they own, there's also, down the road, just vision, other development that's going to happen. There is a perennial stream that runs through the property. There are wetlands that surround it. One of the most vulnerable pieces of a wetland are the streams. As we've done our research, we've seen what the scientific community has said. And streams and rivers are so incredibly essential to our waterways, the oceans, everything. They're also the most vulnerable. And the biggest effect on wetlands and streams is change of use of land. Now, we've already seen Derby Brook, that's been put in, 20 units, totally changed the landscape of the property that did have two houses on it. It is not the same property, which Mike has alluded to. We also have Pennington Hill. Totally understand the need, especially for seniors, for housing. We heard at the Affordable Housing, there was a young woman from Quincy who came in, and she said that the largest group that suffers from homeless are the seniors. Well, that hits home. You know, that, it was staggering, didn't even think about that. So we get it, and we're very happy. But we also need to take into consideration the other things that are going on, and the fact that we've already disturbed the ecosystem to that stream, which is critical to the sustainment of Hingham. And basically to the globe. So just as you're considering, the only thing we would ask is that you look beyond just the two houses, or a house, or whatever is being put there, that we use the rules that have been put in place. They're there to sustain. They are part of a sustainable community, to govern what goes on the property. And we ask that it be the one house, and we fully support that. And we will have people there to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public who would like to speak on the project at this time? Okay, with that, then, I think we should have a discussion about the safe harbor. Emily?
Do you want me to cover it?
Yeah, sure.
There's a procedural requirement in the 40B regulations, 760 CMR 56, that would require the board, if you were inclined to want to consider imposing conditions or potentially denying this application, to send a letter to the applicant that invokes a safe harbor. Because the town, as alluded to through, you know, the applicant's presentation, the Housing Trust presentation, and public comment, has in fact achieved its statutory minima, or an uncontested 10% affordable housing that qualifies on our subsidized housing inventory. So the board has routinely, in the past, opted to send this safe harbor letter. You can discuss this evening whether you would like to do so again this evening. The effect of that would be to preserve your right to impose conditions or deny the project, and thereby eliminating the applicant's ability to then challenge the ultimate decision to the Housing Appeals Committee. There'd be an impact additionally on the preceding timeline. So if you do vote to send that letter, it would toll the hearing process. So the clock would stop on, you know, the total number of days that you have under the regulations to hear the application. And then depending on how the applicant responds, and if applicable, DHCD and/or the HAC, there may be additional changes to the project timeline. The outside limit to send the letter is 15 days from the day the hearing opens, from tonight. So that would be January 22.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, then, I'd like to just discuss amongst the board, you know, thoughts about the 10%, and, you know, whether we should go ahead and send the letter. And I guess I would start by saying that, in my view, you know, each project obviously needs to be evaluated on its merits. I do think that this is a project that we should evaluate, even though the town has satisfied the 10% criteria. And, you know, that will allow us to look at the project and figure out whether there are ways to condition the project and to approve it. And obviously, if we come to a point where we find that we can't approve the project, then we have the option to deny it. But I think that we really ought to consider the project for all of the reasons that were stated by the Affordable Housing Trust. And also because that's what we do, that's why we're here, and that's why we evaluate these projects. So I, I mean, it's my view that we should go ahead and send the letter. But I want to hear a comment from the other board members, please.
I was on the planning board when Derby Brook was permitted. So I have, I have the memory of that experience. And I would like to see, Ms. Wentworth, the waivers that were requested with respect to the construction of that project. I also know that this property that we're talking about, in its present iteration, was once contemplated to be a public safety facility. It's obviously too small for the needs that the town has presently to be considered seriously for that. So that's in my mind as well. I happened to have another role last year when the Affordable Housing Trust came in on this property. And they necked it down from three units to two. I remember when there were two houses up there that people actually lived in. That, Whiting Street and that whole area, if memory serves, has undergone some serious changes in the last 25 years. And I've been a part of that in one form or another, whether it's, you know, the Whiting Street one, or Derby Brook, and now this. You know, Tim White is right. This town really has... It's a, it's a rich town, and it's, it's very expensive to get in. You know, I know with my own children how difficult it's been for them to live in this community. And I like the idea of our continued commitment to affordable housing. I mean, we're squawking over one house, you've raised some technical issues. You know, I just took a quick look at the topos here. You know, we'll, we'll examine it close, we will. But for some of the people maybe in this room tonight, you might not be in this town were it not for the fact that Derby Brook was a 40B itself. And I'm sensitive to that. So, you know, we have reached the 10%, but every time we say that, we also say we're committed to exploring opportunities for affordable housing. And while I may not be a selectman anymore, I still, you know, take that commitment that was made upstairs very seriously. So, you know, I think we should send the letter, and I think we should proceed. We should, you know, give this a fair, fair look. I've got some questions for Gary. But frankly, I'd like to see what the peer review engineer says first, and take my cue from him. So that's my spin.
Michael, any comments?
I think it's important we continue to look at the, at the project. My in-laws lived in Hingham for 42 years and rented the entire time. And when they retired, they were forced to leave, and are now living in Waymouth. So I think this is important to keep this moving forward and make sure we protect the town's interests, but also, as all the applicants have acknowledged, that there is a, there is a challenge, especially among the elderly, with regard to affordable housing. And I think it's something we should pursue.
Okay. Then in light of that, I would entertain a motion to invoke the safe harbor. And Paul, would you like to make the motion?
A move that insofar as the zoning board of appeals maintains the town has satisfied the so-called 10% statutory minima as provided in applicable state regulations, including 760 CMR 56 at sec, the regs. And accordingly, the board finds that a denial of the permit or imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs. Two, the council for the town is directed to issue a written notice to the applicant on behalf of the board with a copy to the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, stating that the board considers that a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs, and explaining the grounds for the factual basis of the board's position is provided in the regulations. This is the so-called safe harbor letter. And then in the event that the DHCD issues a determination pursuant to the regulations, which is contrary to the board's position set forth in the safe harbor letter, council for the town is directed to appeal the DHCD's determination in accordance with the regulations. And four, that the board designates Robin McGuire, Esquire, as the board member to work with the council for the town in connection with the current application, the safe harbor letter, and any related appeals.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So at this point, Emily, should we discuss scheduling and what, what we're likely to see in terms of scheduling in light of the safe harbor letter and the deadlines that follow?
Yep, so if we assume that the safe harbor letter is sent on the deadline, January 22, that, that filing would, again, toll the clock on the 180-day timeframe that the board has to hear the application. But even though the clock stopped, you still have the option to continue reviewing the application. So, and it might be worthwhile scheduling a hearing in approximately a month. After the applicant receives the notice, they'll have 15 days to challenge it to DHCD. So we'd be able to get a status update on, you know, whether there is a challenge to the town's claim. If we look to... If we look to a potential hearing date, maybe on February 11th, February 6th would be the end of their timeframe to challenge the board's assertion.
And do we expect to have the project peer reviewed by February 11th?
The peer review could be completed by that time, and if the applicant's comfortable, you know, having their engineer respond in advance of an early February date, it could probably be a productive meeting. I will also note that we've received a number of comments from town boards, so the 40B regulations require that these applications are circulated to relevant town boards. We've received preliminary comments from the board of health, the police chief, the planning director, conservation officer, and the fire prevention officer, that is so we would be able to get a response from the applicant to those initial comments, I would imagine, within a month's timeframe as well.
Does that give you sufficient time to respond if we set the next, if we're able to meet on February 11th?
Depends on how quickly that gets, or before the regulation gets activated.
Depends on how much you're going to do.
Yeah. I will just note, we've not authorized Mr. Brennan to proceed yet. We just got a written estimate yesterday on the cost. Habitat just received that quote, so once we receive a check from the applicant for the estimated amount, we would then authorize. So, he'll act as quickly as possible once we have the ability to pay him.
Okay. All right. Are you available on February 11th?
Not until about 7:15, as opposed to 7:00, if that's okay with you.
Perfect. We can start a little later.
Are you all right on the 11th? That's okay with you?
See you then.
Okay, I have, and that's fine. 7:15 would be fine. So, in that case, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing to February 11th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll just do minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you just say you'll do minutes? You're so optimistic.
Let's walk around the town hall saying, "Hi."
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just sent myself a note. I don't forget.
I'm not just saying that that's me. Certainly, there's a lot of...not many.
Took a lot of pride in that one.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, we do, we do. See you, Tim.
Thank you.
We don't have any minutes to approve, even though this is a thing on your agenda, so you can...
Okay, then, you can adjourn.
What, do we adjourn?
Since we have no other items on our agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.